I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There are no recognitions. We're going to move towards the minutes. We're going to do them each separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 9th, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of May 16th, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Yep, so motion carries three, four, five? Five to two? Five with two abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of May 26th, 2023?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And motion carries six with Mrs. D's abstaining. Okay, action items, group one, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item I have for you in group one is to approve the FY 2023-24 GSBA Assembly Solutions Module Subscription Renewal. Assembly Solutions is an online service that allows for public posting of policies, laws, our strategic plan, and our meeting documents. Also allows alignment of these important documents. I recommend approval of the module subscription and policy maintenance service in the total amount of $19,520. Recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the FY 2023 through 2024 GSBA Assembly Solutions Module Subscription Renewal. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve the 24 GSBA Policy Maintenance Service. GSBA utilizes Assembly Solutions to provide policy maintenance services for school districts. Assembly Solutions is an online service that allows for the public posting of policies, laws, our strategic plan, or meeting documents. It also allows alignment of these important documents. I recommend approval of the policy maintenance service purchase in the amount of $2,750.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the FY 2024 GSBA Policy Maintenance Service. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve GSBA membership dues. Approvals requested to renew membership dues for FY 23-24 with the Georgia School Boards Association in the amount $25,325. Board members, I will mention here, every district in the state is a member of GSBA, so I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the GSBA membership renewal dues. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve an easement agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for a construction easement to construct a turn lane at East Calwita High School. Approvals requested to execute a construction easement agreement for the purpose of building a turn lane on Highway 154 at East Calwita High. Copy of the easement agreement and project site plan are attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve an easement agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for a construction easement to construct a turn lane at East Calwita High School. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding Project Hitachi's tax incentive agreement. Approvals requested to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Cowee County Development Authority and the Cowee County Board of Commissioners regarding the recently announced Hitachi project. A copy of the MOU is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding Project Hitachi's tax incentive agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Horton, this is the same type of MOU that we had the last time. It's just purely informational for us?
Yes, sir. It's the same type of agreement or understanding that we had on the recent Frayer project. This is something that's driven by the Development Authority. It's brought to us as information so that we say that we understand that this is being done. Under Georgia law, boards of education have no say-so in the matter. This is appreciated. Sarah Jacobs is here from the Development Authority. I appreciate them bringing these to us in the spirit of cooperation so that we can all say that we understand, but Sarah and the Development Authority have total control. Congratulations, Sarah. Recommend approval.
All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve ELA textbook adoption. Middle and high school district-wide committees representing teachers and parents reviewed textbooks from multiple publishers. Input from parents outside the committees was also sought. The committees chose from the following publishers: Haughton Mifflin-Harcourt, McGraw-Hill, and Perfection Learning. The middle and high school committees chose Haughton Mifflin-Harcourt by majority vote. Middle school was 63% for Haughton Mifflin. High school was 100% for Haughton Mifflin. Just as a note, board members, here on the agenda, I do have some attachments for you. There's a summary of the process that we use for textbook adoption, a listing of the committee recommendations, and the input that was received. And also links to these resources were forwarded to all parents in the district via Infinite Campus Messenger back in April for them to review if they chose to do so. So we have a recommendation before you to adopt ELA textbooks. The cost of this total will be $2,163,203.40, and I'll also make mention, it's been about 15 years, I think, since we've adopted ELA textbooks, so it's something that is certainly timely, and with that, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the ELA textbook adoption. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
I do have a few questions on that. I have been following this pretty closely from the state as well. I do see that they're going to have online instruction, and they also provide textbooks. So we are going back to a physical, this is my Bible, but we're going back to a physical textbook for high school and middle?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm very excited about that. Thank you. We can read without distraction. I'm excited. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, the final item I have for you in group one is to adopt the tentative FY 24 budget. Call on Mr. Chapman. Mr. Chapman?
We've held our two required budget workshops. There's been no change to the budget since our last workshop. I recommend that the Cowee County School System Board of Education tentatively adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget of $398,48,947, which includes a general fund budget of $276, 373,942, and also includes approval of the salary schedules used to compile the budget. This tentative approval includes all federal programs such as Title I and IDEA.
Mr. Chair, recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to adopt the tentative FY 24 budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any discussion? Mr. Farmer, I'm sorry, were you going to?
No.
Okay, just making sure.
I didn't know. Me and Mr. Farmer made the motion at the same time, and you still needed a second, but...
All right, got it. No, got it. Just making sure. All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, group two?
One quick item. As a reminder, we will have a call meeting in two weeks, the 27th, 6:30 here, for the formal adoption of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, to your teams. Now moving to action items, group two bids.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only action item I have for you in group two is to approve a bid for replacement of band towers at East Calwita High, Noonan High, and Northgate High. Approvals requested for the low bid submitted by Torrance Construction Company for replacement of the existing band towers at East Calwita High, Noonan High, and Northgate High. Scope of work consists of demolition of the existing wooden band towers and replacement with new structural steel band towers. Low bid submitted by Torrance is $435,000. The bid tabulation sheet is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the bid for replacement of band towers at East Calwita High School, Noonan High School, and Northgate High School. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I have one question. In parking lots, and those band towers are on the edge of the parking lot, whatever, at Noonan, can they go ahead and do that while the construction is ongoing, or do we have to wait?
We're going to have to time things out with construction to make sure we're finally going to put it. Right now, they're in the senior parking lot. There's some question of whether they'll stay in the senior parking lot, go back to the ninth grade parking lot, or go to the new parking lot. So they're still a little bit up in the air there.
I think that's kind of what I was going to ask with East Calwita. What is the timeline on these?
Mr. Cheek?
Probably sometime in November before February.
What are these towers going to be made out of? I know now.
Is it structural steel?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? All right. Forgot my line. All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, group three, trips.
Call on Dr. Mark Guy to bring you trips. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of East Calwita High School requests permission for the chorus and thespian society to travel to New York, New York from March 13th through March 17th, 2024. Students will miss one half day of school. There is no cost to the school system. The principal of Lee Middle School requests permission for the band and chorus students to travel to Orlando, Florida from February 19th through February 21st, 2024. No school days will be missed, and there's no cost to the school system. And the principal of Northgate High School requests permission for the band to travel to New York, New York on March 15th through the 18th, 2024, to participate in the New York City St. Patrick's Day Parade. Students will miss one day of school. There is no cost to the school system.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We're just going to do all three of these together. Is there a motion to approve the East Calwita High School field trip request, the Lee Middle School field trip request, and the Northgate High School field trip request?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call on Mr. Chapman once again to bring your board report and sales tax. Mr. Chapman?
Board report. I'll say on the surface does not look good because we're over $2 million over budget, but that's because of the health insurance increase that went in place in January. We were finally billed in May. That item, we were not able to budget for because we did not know about it until January. But the good thing is, we've completed 91.67% of the year. We've expended 91.72% of the budget, so we're within 5 one-hundredths of a percent of the year. Can't get any closer.
And just to elaborate, Mr. Chapman, on the insurance costs, we've received money from the state for the majority of those.
The vast majority of that, yes, sir.
We just didn't budget for it last July. That's why it shows as an overage in the budget.
Right. And we do have it in the budget for FY 24.
And then...
I'm sorry.
Just a quick follow-up. So that, just so I understand, we're going to go into the reserves?
No, sir. We will not go into reserves with that.
Okay.
Because the additional funding will offset most of it, and we do have additional income that will keep us out of reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Sales tax, still good numbers, just under $3 million. It is a drop from this month last year. Year-over-year increase is 7.83. It's slowed down a little bit from where we had been, but still good numbers.
Call on Dr. Guy once again to bring you staff and student attendance and your board goal report. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. For the ninth and final attendance reporting period for the school year, the school with the highest staff attendance was Arbor Springs Elementary School. The highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. Highest student attendance for elementary, Thomas Crossroads Elementary. Highest middle school student attendance was Blake Bass Middle School. And the highest high school student attendance, Noonan High School, home of the mighty Cougars. For your board goal report this month, I would like to update you on our annual administrative workshop. This year's workshop was entitled "Building Leadership Capacity" and was held on Monday and Tuesday, June 5th and June 6th, at the Donald W. Nixon Center for Performing in Visual Arts. Attendees utilize the Hoover app, as you all may be familiar with that, is what we utilize at GSBA, and that application allowed participants to interact with each other, participate in immediate polls and responses, and collaborate throughout the two-day event that we held. Dr. Horton recognized system leaders and presented annual leadership awards, and the audience heard from this year's special guest speaker, Brent Keyes, the head football coach at Georgia Tech, for the Georgia Tech Yellow Jackets. During this year's workshops, participants focused on development of the school system's strategic plan, led by Dr. Karen Jackson Barker and the curriculum team. We learned more about school system finance and budgeting from Mr. Christopher Ray Latimer. Strategies for positive discipline and student support were shared from Ms. Chrissy Dement and Mr. Anthony Finley. Administrators focused on school safety, and that was led by Mr. Kenneth Kesselring, and everyone had the firsthand opportunity to learn more about school law from school board attorney Nathan Lee, who presented and answered educational legal questions. The final highlight of the two-day workshop involved administrators and staff visiting various sites throughout Cowee County to promote literacy and to spread goodwill with students, parents, and community members. Participants were transported by Cowee County School buses, thanks to Dr. Fate R. Simmons and a team of dedicated bus drivers. Participants then had the opportunity to engage and interact with students at local parks, recreational facilities, as well as visiting individual neighborhoods throughout Cowee County. This year's administrative workshop was interactive, educational, and fun for all those who participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. I'll move on to the facilities and construction report. You can see Northgate High School's still there. There've been some additional closeout documents that have now been requested and received. Still awaiting final pay request. Madras Middle and Winston-Dowdell fire alarm replacements. Back-ordered fire alarm panels have now been installed. Fire marshal scheduled for a final inspection there on June 20th. Softball field houses, we're still proceeding with design on the replacement of the softball field house at East Calwita and renovations and modifications to the existing field houses at Northgate and Noonan. You heard about band towers earlier tonight, and then, of course, the big one, Noonan High. If you haven't been by there in a while, a lot of transformation has occurred over the better part of the last several weeks. Been taking advantage of some good weather. They have started with some masonry block on the academic buildings. All of the brick is now in on the gymnasium. As a matter of fact, yesterday, they were able to use a helicopter to put the rooftop units on the gymnasium, rooftop HVAC units. So that project is coming along nicely. We're scheduled, hopefully, here pretty quickly for another big concrete pour on the academic buildings, weather permitting, and it'll really begin to, it's really beginning to take shape. There's a lot of work in that center parking lot that has to be done prior to the start of school, so that's probably the one piece that's got us under a pretty good time crunch right now, but work is proceeding nicely, and we still project completion for the academic building, July of 2024, and the gym. We anticipate that it'll be completed in phases beginning this August. So a lot of good work going on over at Noonan High. Last item I have for you is an update on a district line working committee that I would like for us to form. As we've talked about in our March 21st, 2023 whole-board training, student enrollment at Moreland Elementary School is projected to continue to climb over the next several years. Moreland is already operating at 107% of its building capacity, and we've erected mobile classrooms on the campus in the past year. Glanton Elementary School is currently operating at 48% of its building capacity. Glanton's attendance zone borders Moreland's, and as a result, I'd like to form a redistricting committee to discuss and recommend new attendance zones that would affect both Moreland and Glanton Elementary School. Committee will review potential district line options, relevant rationales, and provide feedback and drafts of district line proposals. District staff will work with the transportation department to verify all addresses that may be involved in various proposed line changes provided by the committee. We anticipate we may be able to bring some draft information to you as part of an update at the November board meeting. Committee will consist of three parents from Moreland, three from Glanton, three central office staff members, two board members, and both of the principals from Moreland and Glanton. And then I have a proposed timeline. We form those committees and begin the work in August. August to October, we would have those meetings. We would post maps for review in October and November, and then by February, I would hope, we would be able to have a recommendation to you on potential new district lines that would affect both Moreland and Glanton. So this is the start of that process. Just wanted to make you aware of that this evening. We'll get to work with those principals on forming the committee, and then we'll take the process from there. So I want to make sure we take our time and come to you with a good recommendation, hopefully right after the first of the year. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We're moving to our public comment portion of the evening. We typically start at 7:15, but we're a little ahead of schedule. So in order to improve communication between the Board of Education and the citizens of Cowee County, the Board of Education encourages citizens to attend regularly scheduled board meetings and speak on matters of general public education concern. Forty-five minutes will be set aside for this purpose at each Board of Education meeting to guarantee an orderly meeting and to ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak. The Board of Education has implemented the following rules regarding public comment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wishes to for a period no longer than one minute. Only citizens of Cowee County or employees of the Cowee County School System may speak in the public comment portion of the meeting. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee except through the grievance procedure set forth in the board's personnel policy. No one is allowed to discuss any matters involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In the need to preserve order in the meeting, no person attending the meeting will be allowed to boo, hiss, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any position or action or position will be allowed at the meeting. No personal attacks on any personnel will be allowed. As the chairman of the board, I'm responsible for enforcing these rules. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the Board of Education meeting. Any person not recognized within the allotted time period for public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting. Requests to speak during the public comment portion of a meeting must be received at the Board of Education office no later than three hours prior to that meeting being called to order. So with that, we'll get started. Tonight, we have four speakers. First is Austin Fisher. Okay. Next, Jasmine Meehan.
I don't know if this is working. It hasn't been working all night. I'll try to be loud. I'm a 20-year resident of this county. I have two young children that overall have spent four years in the county school system. I do have firsthand experience inside these schools. I pay my taxes and even the insanely increased property taxes that go to support this school system. No one pays me to come here each month. There is no political agenda on my part as much as you all and some of your friends have tried to project. The issues and concerns I speak about are not a left or a right thing. It should be nonpartisan to want, I'm sorry, it should be nonpartisan to want schools to be a safe place where kids go to learn academics. I tell myself each month that maybe I will say something that triggers you all to action. I keep hoping and praying that you all will come out of whatever strange coma you seem to be in. I will continue to pray for you all and for all of us. No one wants to ban books. However, there should be boundaries in place for our children. If you, as a parent or guardian, want your child to read books with pornography, rape, or specific ideologies, as that is your right, any of these books can be purchased online, checked out at the local public library, or found in a bookstore. No one is saying that these books should be burned or banned and not read, and the literature in question is not comparable to Catcher in the Rye, Tom Sawyer, or To Kill a Mockingbird. Funny thing about those books is they were pushed for removal from the same people that want the inappropriate and obscene materials in our schools. Books like Flamer by Mike Curato or Tricks by Ellen Hopkins by no means are the same as those prior classics. In the state of Utah, the leftist Marxists are trying to remove the Bible from public schools, and it's being reviewed and voted on faster than any of the pornographic books are. Now that says something. The school media center has only so many bookcases and shelves. They should be filled with age-appropriate literature for all the children. We, as parents, should be confident that while on school premises our children are safe, allowing children access to inappropriate literature is not safe, and I do not mean safe from physical harm, but emotional and psychological harm. Since this word is so freely tossed around, the word "ban" means officially or to legally prohibit, as by statute or order. Again, all of the many books presented to this board are available through other means. There's plenty of good books that could be on our school shelves. I personally do not want my tax dollars spent on books that are frowned upon while read aloud in this very room full of adults. I would like to remind everyone about a time when some literature that isn't in our schools available to check out was read aloud here in this room. The Noonan Time Herald, whom we all know will support you guys no matter what, wrote an article about the fact it was read in front of a 12-year-old child who was in attendance at that meeting. Funny thing that was left out of that story was that 12-year-old child was with the Noonan Times Herald attendees. They could have chosen to write an article about the inappropriate books found in the county, but this simply shows that they are in support of perverting our children. I find it ironic that we can allow these types of materials on a school shelf or a classroom lending library, but when it's discussed here in this room, it's inappropriate. Do you all not see the irony and hypocrisy in this? These meetings are assumed to be for adults. You all recently decided to include children to come work the sound and video. I'm sure that this was also in an attempt to stop people like me from speaking on these topics or reading any materials aloud. Again, the irony is just amazing. The Marxist foothold in our education system unintentionally over the last few years has exposed itself. CRT showed its ugly head outside of the colleges, and after its exposure, it's now being disguised as DEI. Companies and governments worldwide are succumbing to this agenda, and you all are taking part in this nonsense as well. Our families and our children deserve better. Thank you.
Alan Brady.
Can I ask a technical question before I start? I assume the microphones are out?
They are.
Is the recording?
The recording is fine.
It's working?
Okay.
All right. If you don't mind, I'll just use my outside voice anyway. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's June, the month of brides with a B. My wife and I are coming up on our 39th anniversary this Friday. The woman has the patience of a saint, and I thank God for that every day. It's also Sacred Heart of Jesus Month, as it has been since the 1700s. And oh, yeah, it's the month of the first among the deadly, seven deadly sins. The one that rhymes with brides. The one that is the opposite of humility. The one that our federal government has declared to be our national religion. The one that has usurped God's symbol of His promise to never destroy the world again with a flood. Don't worry, next time it'll be a fire. Before going on with this month's concerns, I need to revisit some issues from the last couple of months. It appears that our Jacobin friends were triggered by some of the public comments in April and decided to return it to the microphone last month. All are welcome, of course, and should be heard, but comments really need to be truthful. I may be mistaken at times, and I welcome any correction, but I always try to tell the truth. Veritas vos liberabat, the truth will set us free. Last month, someone listed several modern classic books that had been banned. These included some of my all-time favorites such as To Kill a Mockingbird, Brave New World 1984, Lord of the Flies, and so forth. I read all but two in the speaker's list before I graduated high school. I haven't read the other two that were published later. I have seen the movie for one. I hadn't heard of the last one, but it sounds interesting. I'll have to read it. Now, I don't know who's calling for such classics to be banned or whether that might have happened, but it certainly wasn't me, nor was it anyone I've heard speak in this room in the last year and a half. Instead, here's the list of books that haven't been banned but have been mentioned by name, and in those cases where excerpts were clearly inappropriate for minors were read at these meetings, a firestorm erupted. Looking for Alaska, A Court of Mist and Fury, Crank, A Handmaid's Tale, Earl and Me and the Dying Girl, Tricks, Milk and Honey in 19 Minutes. I don't think any of these could be said to be classics, but the real problem is they are sexually explicit and don't belong in the taxpayer-funded school libraries. If parents want their children to read them, which I don't think is a good idea, but they are the parents, then they can buy them for them, or they can probably get them in the local public library. Some of the classic books do cover topics that may require a certain level of maturity to comprehend, but they aren't explicit. Girl after pneumatic girl from Brave New World, and They Were Heavy and Fulfilled Upon Her from Lord of the Flies are adult topics. But they're couched in language that takes a certain level of maturity to understand. I know I didn't understand some of it at first, but sometimes, years later, when I was reminded of it, I got it. That's the beauty of classics. There were a couple of other books that were mentioned by our speaker in April that specifically seemed to spark concern from our friends last month. These graphic novels, to me, that means comic book, are present in Coweta Elementary Schools. I saw and flipped through one of them, and besides having cartoon characters representing children that were all weird and kind of scary-looking, it did, in fact, show children together in the bed kissing and discussing their sexual proclivities, not something that is appropriate for elementary schoolchildren at all. You often hear about gaslighting and straw man arguments, listing those classic books as banned and insinuating that has anything to do with what's going on here. That's a classic example of those things. There were some other interesting comments made. I especially find it interesting how often "love your neighbor as yourself" gets quoted, usually out of context. Yes, Jesus said that as the second great commandment, right after "love the Lord your God with all your heart and all your mind and all your strength," the first great commandment. The second makes no sense without the first. And to love others also means to encourage them not to sin and to obey God's commandments. Jesus also said, "He who would cause any of these little ones to sin, it would be better that a millstone be hung around his neck and him be cast into the sea," along with many other things. As to my original topic that I sent to Ms. Nixon, the hour is growing late, which it is. I will have to return to that in the future as my time tonight is up. Thank you.
Debra Carroll.
Hello, everyone. I said earlier today to Ms. Nixon, I said, "Well, there's only a couple of speakers. I think I'm just going to say hello and sit down and let y'all go home early." But I just changed my mind, and I'm telling you why. Every student in Coweta County school system is welcome in this room. I admire the work, the award-winning work, that the production team from Coweta County Vocational School does. And this is more experience for them, because you are preparing our children for the next chapter in their life. These children are going to be prepared to go right into exciting careers because of the fabulous education they're getting. And this is being a part of this meeting and doing the audio and video is a portion of that. And to think that that is being done trying to quiet anyone is just ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. These young people are doing a great job, and it is important that every young person in our school system feel welcomed when they come in here. Last month, we had two ladies, two young ladies, that talked about some of their struggles in high school. And after the meeting, I was talking with them, and they said to me, "Thank you for standing up for us." I said, "What do you mean?" "Thank you for standing up for the students to come in and speak." It wasn't until then that I realized that so many students still have anxiety about coming here because of the previous board member. You know what I'm talking about. I don't have to repeat it. Those days are over. We've got a new start now, and let's continue it. And let's continue to welcome our students here. And I know every one of you agree with me, that these students are here for all the right reasons. And lastly, I mean, what I actually came in to say was that, you know, this is the month that we get to celebrate diversity. It is Gay Pride Month, and I'm so happy when I go through Noonan and I see those rainbow flags flying. It's also the time that we celebrate Juneteenth. We won't talk about how old I was before I found out even what Juneteenth was, but that's a problem, because history, all history, needs to be taught from 1619 on all the way forward. No matter what it may offend of someone else, you cannot change history. You can't change math, you can't change science. So, and then I've got something else I want to share. The remarks about being gay. Maybe you have a grandchild that you've watched struggle her whole life to try to be feminine, even though she now stands six foot two and is one heck of a hockey player. She's been accepted in all the major private STEM programs in her state as she prepares to go to Georgia Tech and then to NASA. And I do not understand why she would have been in any way made to be felt, to be made felt to be different, why she couldn't have access to reading material that perhaps would have helped her be made feel more inclusive. I know how painful this is. I know that if you are well-educated, you know that no one chooses to be gay. We all know that there are biological reasons why some of us are heterosexual, some of us are homosexual, some of us are black, some of us are white, some of us are red, pink, and yellow. What difference does it make? Because what we do know is that most college students, 80%, are looking for diversity when they choose a college. And so I commend Coweta County school systems for providing that diversity, that we know that the future of our country is going to need. Thank you.
Thank you all in the audience for being in attendance this evening, both online and in person. Also, thank the members of the public who signed up to speak. There will not be any public comment responses from the board this evening. Moving on to board comments. Hearing none.
I have a quick comment. I just wanted to say, this month, we celebrated Teacher of the Year, we celebrated retirements, we celebrated so many great things in graduation, but those retirements are so special because those are people who have dedicated almost over, over 30 years to making the difference in the lives of children in this district. Tomorrow, my husband, he's a mechanical engineer with Georgia Pacific, but he celebrates 30 years at his job. And it amazes me when I'm looking at all the dedication and we see these people, to stay in a career for 30 years says something about your character. It says something about who you are. And to those retirees in Coweta County, I just wanted to say salute one more time. It was our pleasure to recognize them and to say thank you. Some of us sitting at this board are not 30 years old at this board table. That's including me, I'm just kidding. But to say that these are people that were working well before any of us, many of us, were in the system is just a lie, and they're doing it every day. They're driving buses, they're cooking food, they're educating our kids. And you know me, I'm one about everyone that touches a child in education is an educator. So if you're a bus driver, custodian, whatever you do, maintenance, if you're changing tires on a school bus, you are an educator. And I just want to say thank you, thank you to those recent retirees that just left our district.
Thank you, Mrs. Dees. I'm not sure who isn't 30, but Dr. Guy, do you have something to add?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman, for just a moment here. It's been a very, very busy and active three and a half weeks, I think we all agree, as Ms. Dees mentioned, graduation, retirement ceremony, Teacher of the Year ceremony, administrative workshop. And as you all know, we just completed the annual GSBA Summer Conference and Delegate Assembly, along with the Policy and Legal Issues Workshop. And it was quite challenging at times, but we've all made it through. And throughout the conference, I kept hearing over and over from presenters, members of GSBA, other school system leaders, and through their messages about how school boards and superintendents should work together and how school boards should work with and support students and parents and teachers, employees, as well as the community. And while we are not perfect, one thing that came to my mind is about, I thought about all of you all, and Dr. Horton, school board members, you get it. And you really do get it, and you're doing what's right. A lot of boards are still learning how to operate and what to do, but you all are certainly on the right track. And you don't care about, you know, who is right, but you care about getting it right and working together to bring about student achievement. And for that, I just say I commend each of you, appreciate what all of you do, and keep up the great work, and have a great summer.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Glover.
In all the activities of the past month, and Dr. Guy did also with the Teacher of the Year, just another congratulations to Coweta's 2023 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Molly Wilson, who's at Cannon Gate Elementary. It was a great evening right there with the retirement dinner. So congratulations again on all of those Teachers of the Year, and certainly with Ms. Wilson.
Any other board comments? Okay, now hearing none. Is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation? Any discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Parnell? Oh, motion carries seven to zero.